Tony? We're ready? Thank you. Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for July twenty-fourth. Let's start with Chief Freitzel leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, so first thing we'll mention is that Chairman Lemire is on vacation, so that's an excused absence, of course. And Selectman Bork is, has a work commitment, so he will not be able to make it. So tonight, there's three of us. First item on the agenda is a review and approval of items for consent. We have July tenth meeting minutes, we have the accounts payable manifest for seven eighteen of one oh nine, seven sixty-four and ninety-seven cents. And then for seven twenty-five of thirty-one thousand, four twenty-two and thirteen cents. We have a payroll manifest for seven twenty, of fifty-one thousand, one twenty-five and fifty-two cents. And for seven twenty-seven of forty-eight thousand, five fifty-eight and seventy cents. We also have the treasurer's reconciliation for June, the town clerks' reconciliation for June. One intent to cut, a building system trust fund expenditure, and an acting police captain temporary wage. Does anybody have any items they wish to remove? Hearing none. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion, we approve this, right?
Second.
I have a motion by Selectman Brunel. And seconded by Selectman Schaefer. Call us to vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, all those abstain. Excellent. Public input will occur no earlier than six fifteen. Is there any other items or business that anybody has to add to the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on. First item in the business section is Jonathan Hale, Fire Station Project.
Hello again.
How are we doing?
Good. So I'm here just to give everybody a heads up and see where we're at. The last time we met, which was about a month ago, I was charged with going back and reviewing the site concept as it relates to the fire station that was previously designed and how it might be, how it might accommodate a police station on the same parcel. And I do believe that you all got a copy of site plan that I sent around a couple of weeks ago. And what I'm showing here is actually a reconfiguration of the site concept that was previously done in two thousand eight. Showing the five bay fire station and how it would connect to the police station if it were to become a public safety complex. In the lower left-hand corner, I'm, I'm actually, the bigger plan actually shows the build-out if both facilities were located in the same location. The bottom left-hand side is showing what would be the scope of work that would be associated with just the fire station. So you can see, as you travel, basically, the site lays out on a, on a clockwise. You come in, you're allowed public parking along the front, which would have access to the police station, the fire station, or the police station. We would have signage here that would be, do not enter, or staff only, which would allow for parking for police vehicles off to one side. A Sally Port entrance, basically a non-public side of the building where you might have apparatus that are left out. You'd have access to the Sally Port for the Police Department. You'd have the impound, a fenced impound area in the back, sort of the private space. And again, allowing all emergency vehicles to come in on the public side, but exit always onto directly onto Albuquerque, either bypassing the fire station or the drive-through of the fire station. So from a, from a diagram, I think that the public, this concept of an L-shaped building allows for the future design, if you will, of the police station to be attached to the fire station as it's presently configured. I do think that in making that connection, as I said last week, that we could make some modifications inside of the building, should the fire station get approved next year, to accommodate, so that we're not redoing things twice, if you will, when the police station comes along. And I don't know, again, I don't know the status of, we kind of called it a public safety building, but initially, we were hired to do the fire station. So I don't know if it's become a public safety complex, or it's still a fire station today and a police station five years from now.
I think, as we told you when you left here the last time, is that it's still a fire station with the ability to add on a police station. Make sure that we have that ability to do it, so that as we take in all the information, we have the ability to do it at some point in time, whether it be right away or down the road.
So I think that this has been shared with the Police Department through Troy. This is showing total build-out in terms of parking, connecting to the parking lots of the Town Hall. I think that conceptually, it works, and I think it's been vetted now both by Police and Fire and Troy. So that, that being done, that being said, that's great. As I said last time we met, I was, based on this plan, was going to reach out and attempt to get a couple of civil engineering proposals to bring this to a point where we would have an approved site plan by late fall. And I think you should have gotten two proposals, one from SFC and one from CMA. SFC did the proposal back in, actually, a full civil engineering package back in two thousand four, when we were on a different parcel. CMA was brought in, quite frankly, I don't know why there was a change, but CMA was brought in and did the initial concept for this parcel in two thousand eight. So I, I got proposals from the two. If you look at the design numbers, they're within a couple thousand dollars of each other. I did have a conversation with both SFC and CMA, and I've worked with both of them for a lot of years. I don't have a preference one way or the other. Both of them are extremely busy, as is every civil engineer that I know. And I don't know if you have a relationship with either or, in terms of have they done other work for you and have a preference?
I couldn't name it.
What, what is the, I couldn't quite understand the difference in the pricing. The SFC proposal, I just saw forty-two thousand, four fifty.
So that-
And then CMA, I, you know, I just, I added up, well, in their proposal, they actually talk about Phase Two, and they, in text, they say twenty thousand, but then in their detail, it's seventeen thousand.
So, I had a sticky here. So the difference is, in terms of the design phase, that would bring us to a point of having full site plan approval with the planning board, with the state, having a package that we could then put out to bid. CMA's number was forty-five thousand, and SFC's number was forty thousand, fifty dollars.
Okay, so that's the first phase.
About forty-nine hundred dollar difference. The thing that I've, that I realized this afternoon, and I couldn't get a hold of either one of them, is I do think that SFC carried the cost of a backhoe to do the test pits for the septic, where CMA didn't. CMA said, in theirs, they're just assuming the town would bring something over from Public Works and dig a hole. So, quite frankly, I look at this, they're the same number. I mean, it's, it's more of an issue of who can do it in the timeframe, and whether or not you have a relationship and have a choice, one way or the other. But as I said, Troy, I'm, I'm more interested in, in making this work. So, I mean, I've been working without a contract. I'm looking to put this in place and get them started. I've told them that our, our goal here is, this is the site plan, and we want to be fully vetted and permitted by November. And that's the premise that they did the proposal on.
So do you foresee any problems if you went with SFC, where they didn't do the original site plan here, trying to get that, the data and from CMA?
They did the afforded, didn't they?
They did the one before.
Yeah. Both have done, both have done-
Both have done, but CMA did the site plan-
The concept plan for here, yes.
Concept.
They didn't do the full civil, the full civil engineering was never done-
Okay.
For this site.
I'm sorry, alright.
It's just a concept plan. The topography was already done there, that file exists. So they're both starting from scratch.
There's something that's driving me nuts in this design, we talked about this the last time, the indentation of the last three bays. Didn't we discuss that we were going to just try to maximize our space without having the bump-ins? I, I know Steve brought it up.
I had asked why.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, it's an architectural thing more than anything, isn't it?
It's an aesthetic issue. And I do think that there's, and again, this, I'd have to sit down and go through with Frank. The equipment that was listed when we did this ten years ago may or may not be the same. So they were late, it was, there were two bays that were longer because they had stacked equipment. That may have changed, and we can go back and forth. I, I would just caution you, I, I hate to see a shed roof drop snow on an overhead door. I mean, that's what we have here. If you look at the, at the elevations, you know, at least the first three, which were previously going to be Phase One, and they'd have the ability to add the two bays down the road, that, that was a gable end, if you will. So the next two bays shed, you know, shed to the overhead door.
Oh, okay, alright.
So, that being said, if you don't have an issue, I'd like to just bet that we have apples-to-apples numbers. And, because both of these came in on Friday, and honestly, other than reading them, I haven't had a chance to, to go back to them. I just want to make sure they're apples-to-apples, and if you don't have an issue, I'll, I'll talk through with Troy who's available, and who's got the commitment, and we'll get one of, the two of them started.
It's going to be the commit, you know, it may not be price, it may be their firm commitment to the time-
To the timeframe, yep.
Well, like I said, the price is similar, just to take out the stuff they don't need, right?
Yeah. So I can deal with that. The second component that we had discussed last time was actually reaching out and bringing onboard a construction manager. And I did put together an RQ, if you will, for a CM, for your comment. I know Frank sent me some things that I'll, changes that I'll incorporate. I randomly picked some dates in terms of, that I can review again with, with Troy. But what I'd like to do is, is, so with the municipal projects that, that, that we're involved with, we like to do a qualification-based selection, but we ask for an envelope on the second side for, for fees. And A, I can do a select list, or I can do an open public list to everybody and his brother. You guys got to give me some feedback as to how you want me to go about it. I can, I can give you a list of six to eight construction managers that have done fire stations in the past. I'm not sure that that's an absolute requirement, but, you know, some fire departments want to see, you know, their station built by somebody that's already built a station. I will tell you that if I give you a list of eight, maybe four will respond, because everybody is so busy that it's just an issue, you know? And especially where I'm asking for, so in that envelope, I'm asking for their fee, which will be three, four, five percent, and their general conditions and overhead, which would be based on, I'm going to give them a budget for the project and a duration. I think this thing can be built in ten months. So they're going to tell you, what does it cost to have a super and their general conditions to build this over ten months? And typically, we've done this half a dozen times in the last six months for housing projects that go, like, through New Hampshire Housing Finance, or, or in the end, when you take their fee and you add it to the general conditions, overhead, and profit, they're literally within a couple thousand dollars of each other. So that's why it's really important, when you do the qualifications, that we talk about who it is that you want to work with, you know, in terms of their abilities, their reputation, the super they're going to have, those kinds of things, that the dollars ultimately end up being wash. It just hap, it just, they know what it costs them to build this, so. So this is prepared, subject to comment from the town. I can post this, I can have a construction manager onboard by the middle of September, in about six weeks. By the time I put it out, advertise it, have them come and have a meeting, and then get proposals in hand, bring those proposals back to you. I schedule it so I'd have them on the fourteenth, and you meet the third Tuesday, so I could review that with the Selectmen. We could choose somebody at that point. If I get the civil engineering started, eight weeks from now, I'm hoping to have plans into boards for review and, and comment, which are typically far enough along to actually start some civil pricing. And the goal is to have, you know, a guaranteed maximum price to build this thing, the fire station, all the site work, by early, end of November, early December, for your bond hearings and, and where you go from there.
Sounds great.
Is there going to be a state, is there a state permit, right? Is this going to-
There is an-
-trigger the state permitting process, just square footage that we're disturbing?
It's very close with just the fire station. And so, that was my next question. So one I'm looking for, before we jump to that, I'm, I'm looking for feedback or approval that I can note, I, I either file this in a newspaper with a public notice, or we do a select list. I get six or eight contractors to Troy to review, we agree that that's the list, we do a select list, we invite them, and, and I handle the whole thing.
Alright, so let's go with that. What would you prefer?
Select list.
Select list?
Select list.
I'm onboard too, so we'll definitely go that way. Do we want a motion for that?
Yeah.
I mean, if you just want to reference the RFQ that, that we've put together, request for proposal, the criteria that it'll be a select list, and allow Troy and I to work out the details, we can move forward in that direction.
Motion by Selectman Brunel, second by Selectman Schaefer. Any discussion? I, I think it only makes sense to use a select list, you know these people, you know the project going forward. I think it only makes sense for you to reach out to the people you've worked with before.
We're on a tight schedule too, so-
In the same token, do we need a motion for us to move forward? Well, I guess not.
Alright, I'll call this one to a vote first. So noted question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstained, motion carries, three zero zero.
I'll ask Troy, are we free to work out a contract? I mean, I'm just going to roll this into mine, so-
Right.
Okay, so we're good. So the next question here is, as we move forward here, the way the state law reads is that if you intend to modify a parcel within a ten-year window, and it is greater than two acres, it triggers the AOT. Phase one of just the fire station is probably right on the cusp of whether it needs an AOT or not. Typically, we can massage the numbers to make it not. But if you come back and tell me, in February, we're going to go with a public safety complex, I need to know, am I designing this whole site? Or am I designing just Phase One?
I say whole site.
Yeah, I would too, but what's, what's the hurdle with the state, how long does that take? In a, in a ten-year window, so if you, if we build this, permit this, build this, and two years from now, you decide we're going to, even though the site's there, and you just have to drop the police station on it, you have to go back to the state and get it, you have to pull an AOT permit. So you're going to go through that rigorous review with the state.
And one, one time or another, right? If we do it now, wait later?
In a ten-year window.
It's good, yeah, everything's good from the government.
What's the timeframe for it, though? When you, if we were going to pull it now, would that delay the project as you're scheduling it out?
Pull what?
The AOT permit.
No, it'll be part of the permitting process. So two months from now, when the civil gets the package, you're going to send one to the city, the town, and we'll send one to the state. It'll be concurrent. And, and, you know, we're doing a courtesy review with the planning board. Typically, you would get a conditional approval that state permits come in, the AOT comes in, and you have to address those, those issues, so.
What's, what's the shelf life of the AOT permit? Ten years?
No, your planning board, it's dictated on planning board approval, so your planning board approval is only good for, well, I don't know, we'd have to touch base, but in some towns, it's one year, in some towns, it's two years.
I thought it was more than two years.
I'm just, I'm just curious, if we, if we go through that permitting process, are we wasting money if, if we don't disturb the site within ten years? I'm just saying, is that state permit going to expire? It's, it's linked-
No, state, that, that state permit will not expire. What'll happen is, if we design the whole thing, and worst-case scenario, it doesn't pass a town meeting, you know, you keep doing this. The ability is that you're, you've got a fully engineered, fully engineered site that we don't have now. You just keep going, because it's the municipality, and you're not, not asking for permits, you're basically asking yourself in a courtesy review, you're just going to keep taking the plan back to the planning board and said, we're going to move forward.
I mean, because it's the town, we don't even have to go to the planning board.
No, you don't. So to that end, I don't know if you have a third-party engineer that typically does plan reviews for the planning board? Who is that?
National Regional- Luke Heron. Well, we have, so we have a member from the National Regional Planning Commission, but I also believe we have a contracted engineer, Luke Heron, who reviews site plans as well.
So my question is, will he review this on, on-
He will for a fee, and provide input, you know?
But does, will the town want someone to review this before it actually goes forward? The only reason I ask is that-
Have to ask the planning board if they could waive it.
Alright, so not to say that you're not capable of your job, but why wouldn't we have him review it?
Why, it's, it has a PE stamp on it. I bring it to the planning, you know, there's a review. And, you know, we don't have the staff to do it, so we send it out, whether it's Keach Nordstrom, or, you know, all these different firms that do the third-party review. You know, they go out, they come back with comments and questions, and we have to, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's and do that seminal process. Where the town's designing their own site, I don't know if you would have the town engineer look at it, or if you're going to have Luke Heron. I'm just trying in process, knowing-
I've done this in other, I've done this in other towns, I, I don't think we're talking about a lot of money. A lot of times, a lot of good comes out of sticking to that planning board process. You get some, some good discussions, some things that are pointed out.
It's just more process for me, I'm just trying to anticipate.
I, I would say plan on him looking at it.
But does the AOT include, like, the parking lot and everything? I mean, that's the whole site, isn't it? Yeah, so whether you have a police station there or not, the AOT applies to the whole shingle building, basically, infrastructure.
But my, I guess my question came from, if we were doing just the fire station, that's the diagram we're going to build and permit today.
But you're, but that's, that's still pretty close to the same area you have in the big picture, though.
Well, minus all of, all of this parking, all of this parking.
But that's still going to be disturbed, though, because you're building a road driving right by it. So that, is it within the parameter, or is it the actual disturbance?
It's disturbance, so, that's why you can manipulate the numbers a little bit. I mean, we're going to permit-
It's more a clarification.
This whole piece, I understand, and that's what the fees are based on, so we'll move forward with that, with the expectation that somebody's going to do a third-party review of something down the road.
What, what exactly is, what is the AOT for those, for the benefit of people listening?
It's called the Alteration of Terrain Permit. It's, it's a process, it's a permitting process that you have to do with state oversight for a land development greater than two acres. So if you affect a parcel greater than two acres, the state wants to know about it. You know, and it's about stormwater runoff and wetlands impact and all of those things. On a smaller development, a smaller parcel, typically, they leave it to the municipalities and the locals to review. But the state deems a two-acre parcel to be big enough for them to want to be noticed of it and want to have some input. Alright. So civil, construction managers, I'll move forward. I'll work with Troy to put together a contract for our scope of work, including the civil and the rest of it. The final issue, I just want to bring to everybody's attention, the, so this set of drawings that we're using is, is complete enough? I say complete enough, it is complete, and it, and we are capable of getting, of bidding this with construction managers for a GMP at the end of the year. The dilemma I have is that two of the subs that were engineers on this parcel have either retired or gone out of business. Bob Recknack with SW and C, structural has retired and is not doing any more work. So if we want to do, you know, effectively, I don't have, there's no insurance, because his business doesn't exist anymore. And I can't do any changes with him, I mean, I'm not sure what to do at, with that. Mechanically, Yeton is still in practice, but he only did mechanical, I can handle that. Electrical, Bri Hope Associates is still doing a little bit of work, but moved to Florida. So, and he's let his New Hampshire PE stamp go. So I don't have electrical, and I don't have structural. So, as I said before, I'm more interested in getting you to a point where we have a GMP, we get approvals with the town, we bring this before the voters in March, we know what it's going to cost, and you roll some money into addressing the changes that might or need to take place after the fact. I would like the opportunity to go back to Yeton and say, here are the electrical drawings that were done. If you could do a review of that, I'll pay you to stamp that engineering. After you've done the review, can we work something out? I've done a lot of work with, with Wayne over the years, and, but I'm not quite sure what to do with the structural component.
So the issue that we have is that we're talking about flipping the inside of the fire station, correct? And the fact that you have contracts that are no longer in business.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Those plans are kind of useless at this point.
No, 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 don't say that. There's a lot of value here, I mean, you, you paid over a hundred thousand dollars in two thousand eight to put this package together.
Right.
I'm just trying to get you to a point where you don't have to do that yet again, to get to that same point you were in two thousand eight. There's enough here to work with a construction manager, to put the budget together for the Warren article, to move it forward. And all I'm saying is, whatever modifications in terms of flipping the building, mirroring the building, I can handle all of that in CAD. That design exercise, Troy and I can work out, we, we allot some small amount of money to cover that after the Warren article passes.
How much do you think that would cost?
I haven't given it zero thought, to be perfectly honest with you. I would like to sit with my staff and say, you know, what is involved?
The only reason I ask is because in some of the discussions Troy and I have had, is the value of showing the voter exactly what they're going to get.
We've already done that.
I understand, but if the building's going to be opposite?
We've already done that, I've already flipped it.
You've already flipped it.
Oh, okay, oh, you are, you're there.
So we could, my point was, as you start having, we start having slide shows of, no, but the interior walls, are you, are we able to show, here's where the training room will be, here's a shared bathroom, shared kitchen area?
Look at this graphic, this graphic has the fire station flipped with the CAD plan, I mean, it's very small, but graphically, it's- Look at this graphic, this graphic has the fire station flipped with the CAD plan. I mean, it's very small, but graphically, it's there. It's, yeah, we've, we have flipped it. I haven't made the changes where the training room might move, you know, a little more central to be accessible from the police department, those kinds of changes.
I think that's what Steve's asking, though, so that we would have a visual.
Yeah, I can, graphically, for the Warren article, I can give them pretty pictures, elevations, floor plans, not an issue. The other issue, and I just say this for your own references, um, our office made a transition to what they call Revit three years ago. AutoCAD is not being supported, Autodesk doesn't support AutoCAD. I mean, it, the, we still have the programs, but we don't draw in that program anymore. Um, and you can't bring AutoCAD into Revit. I can convert Revit to an old AutoCAD file, so this is drawn in, um, software that, I have staff that has never even drawn in before, so it's not without its challenges, but I'm still convinced that there's value here, that I can make work for Troy to save the town a considerable amount of money moving forward. We just wanna get the word out. You know, ultimately here, the, the goal is to get the voters to acknowledge the need and fund the building. That's where we are.
So we'll have that, we'll have drawings and things to show people and pictures and, okay.
I mean, I'll have, um, you know, subject to Troy and I working on an agreement, I can have elevations of the building. You have, you have the concept site plan. I have things that we could start, um, sharing with, um, the town in a couple of weeks.
Have we, um, started the ball rolling with the, um, police department survey yet?
Uh, Ben's been handling that.
Have you been?
Yes, sir. Uh, he was able to, uh, accomplish what we were looking to do with the board's group, uh, in that, uh, dollar amount. And I'm waiting, I should hear something back, uh, tomorrow or Wednesday, I assume, when they'll, they'll come out and start the assessment.
Cool, okay. That's good. So what else do you need from us?
Nothing.
Nothing? Nothing at all. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The dotted lines on the bottom, say the back corner behind the police station. I'm gonna say that that's the storage area.
It's a fenced in, secured area.
What's the approximate width that you have going through there, and is that the best place for that? Only because the fire trucks will always be going through.
Are you talking this impound area here?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I mean, is it the, um?
I'm not trying to question what you're doing. I'm just asking a question. I sit on the planning board, I see a lot of things, and sometimes things look tight. And I would hate to maybe make things tight from the start.
Could we approach further on the property line then? Pull it closer, closer to the property?
Yeah, expand the asphalt.
Yeah, I mean, I, they needed to have, eh, wherever they do, wherever they put it, it's gotta be close proximity to the police department.
No, I understand that. I just, with the trucks passing through there.
Oh, yeah.
Today, we may have trucks that would go through there no problem. I just don't want it to end up being an issue.
If we moved it like six feet or something, that might.
Well, that, that turning radius will accommodate the largest tractor trailer you can plausible. I forget what it was. It, it's a sixty-five foot radius, so it's, it's, um, yeah.
Okay. I only ask because on the plan, it looks like it might be a little tight.
I guess the reference, how, how deep is that park, the, the driveway to the Sallyport? Is that a car deep? Might look at the?
Yes, you could stack, you could stack two cars in front of that garage.
Side by side, how about as far as deep from, uh, from the Sallyport to the parking lot?
It's twenty, twenty, well, it's twenty on the short side and probably closer to twenty-eight, thirty feet, yeah. And there is the opportunity, I mean, in this plan, and I didn't show it, that if the Sallyport wanted to be a drive-through, where, you know, it could actually, you could actually turn it, you know, um.
Drive-through is safe, too.
And this is, this is your concept. Once you get the civil engineer on board, you know, things could cha- like, for example, that detention pond. You know, if you're working with the engineers and stuff, is the way to get that?
Yeah, they're gonna finesse from an engineering standpoint.
I'm like, you know, if we can get that detention pond somewhere else, it just looks like valuable real estate right there.
Isn't the detention pond today up in the front by Hillcrest?
There is one here in front of our. You know, if it's a culvert underneath Liberty Way, let's put the culvert in, but that's a discussion with the civil engineer.
I mean, in concept, you know, you're gonna end up, you know, you're gonna have some kind of swales, you're gonna have a, a pond.
Right.
Um, whether it's retention or detention.
I'll be honest with Troy, I, I was actually surprised that that was the only one, and that it can be that far back.
Right.
I was actually surprised at that.
The, well, when we do site plans like this, you're gonna have a couple of catch basins and pipe. So, I mean, we've put detention ponds, you know, three hundred feet away, just and piped to it.
Can you square it up and call it detention pond backslash ice skating rink? Alright, so you'd need nothing from us, and?
Other than the, the, the okay to, to charge ahead.
Yep.
And I'll do that with, with Troy and, um, keep the chiefs involved.
What is the approximate square footage of the police station that you put on that plan?
Roughly eight thousand square feet. Conceptually, it can get wider, it can get longer. Um, what it can't do is, um, you know, if the study that they're hiring to do comes back and says it's a fifteen or twenty thousand, and I'm thirty days into the civil engineer and you go timeout, you know, the, the anticipation of the, the, the police component and something else is gonna be much bigger, and it doesn't work in this configuration.
What size are we working with now? Three thousand?
We're waiting about thirty-five hundred.
So this is two and a half times what you have today, and, um.
God, I would hope that works.
If, as an architect, if, if for some reason, you started going down that path, what's to prevent you from going up one story?
Dollars.
Dollars, by meaning, you could go up.
Second floor means an elevator and two stairs. You just added two hundred thousand dollars, um, to the budget. Um, and there's a programmatic issue with separating, you know, spaces on two different floors. What is public and what isn't public, and how do I move people around, and, um, stairwells are a mess.
And, and, and I think it appears it's eight thousand, give or take. But that doesn't include the, the training community, conference rooms.
Yeah, you're gonna have some shared spaces that are.
So that is gonna make it a little bigger, or de- deduct from what their, their analysis may, you know, may say you need.
If you had storage in the basement, if you did a basement to that, do you have to have an elevator still?
It becomes an employment ADA issue. Because no matter where you put stuff, you know, you have to have an employment policy where, um, I'm in a wheelchair, I can't go downstairs, you know, my coworker's gotta go get it for me. Um, in a municipal public building, it's really tough to argue you didn't put an elevator in because of dollars. You know, you spend six, seven, eight million dollars, whatever it is, and, um.
Here's a stupid question. Is a basement elevator the same price as a?
Yeah, two stop is two stop.
It's almost, it's almost at that point, you might as well make two floors and a basement.
Yeah, I know, exactly.
Right, yeah, if you gotta do two floors, you may as well put the basement, because the bulk of your cost is there.
What if that was the thought and why this one never got a basement?
Alright, so, um, but you said that the police station could be pushed out a little bit, if it needed to be a little bit bigger?
Be tweaked, it can, you know, there's, there's, as long as conceptually, the police department agrees that, you know, there's a pub- there's a public side, there's a private side, there's a front door, there's a back door, there's a Sallyport, there's, you know, the, the elements that they're looking for that touch the site plan, I think that there's modifications that you can make down the road. A question for you is, we're going to permit this entire build-out. Um, from a site standpoint, all I need is this driveway that gets me to the back of, of the five bays, if you will, and an apron to get out. And I've got some parking that, you know, is associated with the fire department. Um, when we get to a GMP at the end of the year, are you looking for the contractor today to build out the entire site plan? You've probably more than doubled the cost of the site.
I wouldn't pay the parking lots, because they're just, they, they could be damaged during construction.
No, well, I mean, short of that, but is your expectation that this will all be built out except for the blue police building in the middle?
I would say no. I would say we would only build what we would need.
And then add to it after?
And we would do the other altogether when we do a police station.
Yeah, so that, as the need, as the police station gets the police station, they get their parking, they get their impound lot, they get those things that go along with it.
I mean, this, I don't know if it would be too far now, but like the impound lot, how we say it has to be in proximity, close proximity to the police station. I mean, I don't know if doing an area like that right now might help alleviate space issues they have currently.
Yep.
I mean, that would be a minor modification to what you have.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Correct?
Yes.
Right. I mean, I could see us doing that, but aside from that, I don't think we need to have enough parking for a hundred and fifty vehicles for a fire station.
I got a question, though. The, um, when you added, like, you have the fire station by itself, and then you added the police station to it, and you have a little red block behind the police station connected to the fire station. Um, what is that? I'm just curious.
It's the future, the future build-out of the fire station.
That's the future build-out, so, eh, when, if you go back to this plan here, the fire station actually had a, it had base plan, which was three apparatus bays, future two additional bays, and then it had a room in the back that was sleeping quarters for the fire station. If in the future it became a full-time station and, and a twenty-four seven man station.
Why wouldn't that be added to the plans now?
Yes, yes.
Instead of making a future? The only reason I say this, every once in a while, we have emergencies in town, and we have people on full coverage. I mean, I don't know that people need to sleep, but when they're on coverage, but.
So, a, a room, we could build out a room and use it as, and in that location, it could be a training room, it could be other. I would just caution, the politics of, you know, selling this to the community is, um, see, they're gonna get a fire station, and now the next issue is they're gonna be a full-time fire station, and you're gonna add six staff and full-time employees, and you know, and that's not.
They wouldn't go for that, no.
No, that's, that's.
Not what we.
That is valid, but it's also valid to think of the thought, if four years down the road, three years down the road, or eight years down the road, you say, okay, we're gonna have to do full-time staff, and by the way, we gotta throw a hundred thousand dollars onto our new fire station to build out for it.
We could, we could build out the training, a training space that could be, could have a second use down the road as, as sleeping quarters.
Yeah, if you were to build it out now, just not specifically as sleeping quarters.
Exactly, yeah. So we, uh, we were just trying to show the entire program, um, and that being a shared space, if you will.
Just a thought.
And I think John, John raises a good, and it really raises a good point, eh, is that, you know, there, there is no current plan to increase staffing, increase the twenty-four hour coverage, or, or anything like that. That's not at all part of this project, and really not on the radar. So, I, I think that bears, you know, being made known in public.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Troy, I'll call you tomorrow.
Thank you, chief.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
It's not a marathon, thanks for the. Give Ben the hot seat.
Hi, chief. Okay. Next item on the agenda is additional highway block grant funds.
That's still not official yet, right?
It's not a, it's not official, however. Um, everything indicates, this, I mean, the law passed, I mean, the, this, this Friday, uh, we should, we should be learning what the dollar amount is for the town. Um, some of the material that I've read is, you know, the checks could actually be in the mail, uh, this coming Friday. But the very least, I would expect to receive some type of notification from the New Hampshire DOT, um, indicating the dollar amount. Right now, we're, we're led to believe that we should be receiving, uh, the same amount of, of funding that we received last year for highway block funds, and we had budgeted about two hundred one thousand dollars. Jack has been working with Continental Paving, uh, to plan on this, on these funds. And what he's recommending is that we, uh, finish the Page Road project where he left off this spring, at ninety-nine Page Road, and we go all the way to three A. So there'll be some sections there that we're gonna grind, and there'll be se- sections where we just do an overlay. That's almost exactly one mile of section of roadway that we're talking about. And then, there's a section of Albuquerque in the north end, um, starting at, um, I don't know if I get them backwards here or not, but Griffin Lane, uh, down to April Drive. And again, we'd be doing, some areas would be do grinding, and then we'd just be doing the overlay.
Did a lot of patching there this.
That's where we did some patching last year, and if you're up there really close to it, you can see that it's, it's in this, there's, there's sections that are in a state of failure, because of, you know, you could see the, the wheel rails are starting to sag, and you've got the alligator cracking. So that's our plan, and hopefully, if we have enough funds left, Cardinal Lane is another road. Maybe a lot of you are not that familiar with it, it's, it runs parallel to Albuquerque down by the, and it's in really bad shape. You familiar with it? Yeah. So we're hoping that we could try to squeeze that in, too, but we're still working on pricing for that.
We don't know how much we're getting.
Right, so I just, we, because if this money comes, you know, we're gonna move pretty fast. We wanna try to get these projects done this year. So, once we receive notification of the dollar amount, I'll place a, uh, public hearing in the newspapers. And our first meeting in August, hopefully, we'll be able to, uh, ho- hold the public hearing, and the board can, you know, approve, um, the plan. So we just wanted to kinda break the ice, let you know what we're thinking about here, and.
How much do you think we're gonna get?
Everything I've read is, is, you know, it's gonna be somewhere between one ninety to two hundred thousand.
It's a good fit.
And there's just, the conditions are, I don't know what the exact conditions are, but they're very specific. They want these funds to go a hundred percent into new roadway projects. Nothing that's gonna subsidize your already, your.
Yeah, whatever you budget this year cannot be subsidized, has to go on a future project. So we're basically getting next year's project early?
We are doing a, some heavy lifting here, what we were talking about, planning on next year. Um, also, it's come to my attention that we have an old special fund that's under the Board of Selectmen's control, and it's for Albuquerque. It's off-site improvements fund. And we have a balance of twelve thousand fifty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. So, we've gone through the history of this fund, um, and it went through different cycles, but eventually, um, with some escrow accounts, some impact fees, at one point in time, they rolled all this money into a fund, they labeled it off-site improvements, and the purpose of it was to, uh, do work on Albuquerque. So now would be a perfect time, uh, for the board to act on that, and release the funds, um, to do it with this project. You don't need, you don't, you could vote on it this evening, or you can wait and see if we, um, how the funding comes out from the block grant. We can vote on that in August.
An Albuquerque off-site improvement fund?
This thing's got history. It goes way back in the early eighties. Um, and then, like I said, towards the end, it looked like what the selectmen, the road agent did, they just took money from cleaning everything up from various projects, and they put it all into a fund, and it was earmarked, um, for Albuquerque. The north, the north section of Albuquerque.
I just question the intent.
I, I think it was because, because I don't know, you know, the history as well as you folks, but, um, you know, Albuquerque was being built in sections by contractors and different efforts, and so as every section got built, there's always a, you know, some mon, funds laying around, and at some point in time, the project was done, and the selectmen, uh, just consolidated everything into one fund, and they labeled it off-site improvements.
Interesting.
It's, it's one of those things, you know, it's one of those funds laying around, it's in the town report, and it's just there until someday, uh, you know, we find a good opportunity to use it and close it out.
You wanna wait till we get the block grant, and then lump it in there with that?
That would be my recommendation. That way, the, it can, it can sit in my brain for a little while.
I know, you're gonna have some questions.
Albuquerque off-site improvement.
There'll be six more questions, at least.
Is that all of that?
Yes.
Alright, not to get off topic, is this something that you wanted to do?
I was just happy to make myself available in case there are any questions or whatnot. Otherwise, I was gonna depart the party, but I was just happy, everything's going good on our end, but I just wanted to let you know that I was available here, if you had any questions, concerns.
No, good. Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure that...
Nope, just in case any, if there are any questions or whatnot, so that's it.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks for coming by, thank you.
How come the chief left town and then everything went crazy? That's my question.
It has gone nuts.
Well, it's a real test for him, and he seemed to look pretty well so far.
He's got no hair.
Alright, so at this time, I'm gonna open up public comment with no public in the room, I'm gonna close public comment, and we will keep moving on capital improvement plan.
Alright, um, I wanted to get, I wanted to have a discussion with the board about capital improvement plan. We, if you recall last year, we, um, took some funds from our operating budget, and we paid, um, money to New Hampshire, to the National Regional Planning Commission to assist us with the capital improvement plan, and they've been working on it, and they've gotten to a point where, um, we need to start getting the forms out to all the department heads, all the committees, and, and the school, and starting, you know, to, to start receiving projects for the next seven years. I, it's really, the, the plan is outdated, it needs, it really needs to be, um, put together and discussed and, you know, approved by the Board of Selectmen. And I just, I have a feeling that maybe in the past, we've had a capital improvements committee, but I'm not so sure.
Didn't it get put on the ballot that we were gonna form one?
No, so we formed one, and then as we did, we went through all the assets and figured it all out, we rolled it into the TA's role. The committee was abolished.
There you go.
That, that's, because I know that there was a warrant article...
We have, it was used to part of the, I think that the warrant article was more about pulling away from the planning board, that the town would do their capital improvements. We did a committee for us, went through the process, we could basically inventory a lot of stuff, and talked to different department heads, figuring out what the future needs were, and then we created a capital assets list, and we have a schedule of decommission and recommission. And that was at that point in the TA's role to, um, maintain with the department heads, because that's the best place for it, other than some of these other unique projects.
Yeah, I, I just, that, that's why I wanted to make sure the board was, um, comfortable with that process, and that we don't need to go out and form a capital improvement committee, making up, you know, department heads, some committee members, and planning board members, and it just, I really think that will slow the process down. I work with department heads, boards and committees, get the schedule, get it all together, and it will be this board, which will review. You, you may decide to have a public hearing, encourage people to come in and provide input, and then, uh, you can, uh, adopt it, and we'll have a plan.
I think the, um, the challenge I have, and Steve, you know more about this than probably I do, is the backfeed into the planning board to make sure that our, you know, other fees we collect...
The impact fees.
Are set appropriately for what the right programs are, and I don't know if we have that, that worked out. Because they just did theirs, right? They just did theirs based on the, the old process?
Uh, the planning board got this stripped away from them.
So they didn't set any impact fees for anybody, left it the way it was?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the impact fees go through a process, and they paid, um, Bruce Mayberry to basically go through base off of the capital improvement plan, which is the reason why you need one. But the problem is, is we still don't use the capital improvement plan like we should. We should recognize the capital needs, we should start funds that can actually buy things, I mean...
But wasn't that what the, don't we have a capital reserve fund? I thought we created a capital reserve fund a few years ago that we wanted to start populating money into for this.
We have, you have some capital reserve funds, um...
I think that was a concept.
We got expendable trust funds and capital reserves, so, um, you know, we just started one again this year for, uh, I think that was for the fire station, just for, um, equipment repairs and replacement, but we don't have a fund established to, um, actually start preparing to purchase new engines.
But we need to...
We don't have one, I don't think, for highway equipment.
No, we don't, but I thought the idea was, the fire department was the first one, we knew we had something coming down the road, but we haven't funded it correctly. You're right, it's, it was put to help repair us, but it's also supposed to fund a new, potentially a new vehicle up the road.
Right.
Hmm, no.
The one, the one we did, we just...
Because that's what I wanted, and we couldn't do it. Our, our town attorneys...
Out of the, uh...
Our town attorneys kept saying, no, it had to be separate.
Oh, it had to be separate funds?
Yeah.
So we didn't create the separate fund then? I thought we created one for the truck.
No.
So we, that's...
We have the ability now to repair our emergency equipment.
I misunderstood that then.
And replace it if, if it may have a value amount of cap on the replacement.
Yeah, so we have to, we, so we have to establish the capital reserve. To me, I would establish one for the town and not categorize it, but, and use that capital plan as a reason why we're funding it, right?
I mean, I remember back ten years ago, on the planning board, when we were going through a capital improvement plan, that Pelham developed one, and they sent it to their voters, and it was a plan of like, we're gonna need this many police cars over the next ten years, like, how many you need each year. We're gonna need this truck replaced, this fire engine replaced, this highway vehicle replaced, and they went to the voters asking like, for a hundred and fifty grand a year with like a ten-year timeframe, just to put towards all of these things, so that then when they could say, okay, we need a fire truck, you could say, well, we have half of the money here to put towards it, so we only have to raise and appropriate this much. And that was the intent, and it kept failing. It failed two years in a row. I don't know if they ever got it through.
So we used their plan, we, we, we had the committee, we reviewed the plan, and that was sort of the concept to develop the inventory, right? Because we have to understand when stuff is gonna be need to be replaced, so we have ti, we, again, I haven't seen the spreadsheet in a while, but we have a...
Yeah, you have the spreadsheet, I've seen it.
By, when it's gonna be, when it's gonna fall off from an asset perspective, and what the co, replacement cost was. So we have the year-over-year costs that we should be raising to put into the fund, but to your...
I don't think our, I, I've seen the spreadsheet that, um, Jason had prepared, and I don't think it's changed that much. So it's really probably updating the cost of the equipment, flushing out any new things that have come up.
Right.
So, so it's good, because you have to have them in order to collect the impact fees, but it's bad because we don't actually use it for what we should be. And that's where distrust can come in, because if you go to the voter and ask for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to try to minimize some of these giant costs down the road, I mean, if they completely understood, you can explain it right, they'd probably be like, yeah, that makes perfect sense, but every once in a while, you'll have somebody else say, how do I know you're not gonna mismanage that fund? And that's where the doubt comes in, and that's where it screws everything up, because then when we're gonna buy a fire truck, we're gonna spend six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars now to buy a fire truck.
Something with a fund like that, you know, you, um, maybe that's one of those, if you, you know, it's gonna be a substantial amount of money, you don't ask the voters to name the selectmen as agents to expend, so you start putting the money in there, it's a savings account. When it's time to purchase a new fire engine or plow truck...
They have them to do it.
You go on the warrant, you wanna appropriate X amount from the fund. There'll be no mistrust, because the, the voters will say, yes, we'll take the money out of no.
Yeah, I think the only challenge is, is that what happens when it happens in the middle of the year, and we can't do the whole cycle, right? We can always...
You have a special town, a special meeting.
We always lease a truck and then pay it.
Well, you shouldn't be buying a six hundred thousand dollar truck.
No, I, I agree, I agree, what you're saying, I thought...
On the spur of the moment.
It wasn't the six hundred thousand dollar truck I'm working on, I'm working on some of those things that could happen, you know?
But that's what, that's why it's a capital improvement, it's supposed to be the big cost items.
Well, it's supposed to be the scheduled cost items, not necessarily the emergency stuff, so...
It's tough, I mean, a lot of towns are, uh, you'll see a lot of towns just, are just lease purchasing all their heavy, heavy equipment, fire engines, backhoes, plow trucks, police cruisers. The same thing as putting money in the bank every year, other than, the, the, you know, obviously, the obvious difference is that one year, you can say, no, and once you do a lease purchase, you're committed to making that payment. But it'll take you quite a few years to save up enough money to buy, you think about it. So in the Litchfield Hudson News, they, you know, Hudson just bought a brand-new, uh, engine, and it was five hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
It's a grand, man.
So, how many years will it take you to just save up enough money for one engine? What do you do about the two plow trucks, this and that, and, you know, and that's why you see towns financing this stuff.
Right.
Well, we finance stuff too, we started getting into a battle about whether or not we actually can go into a finance contract without town meeting.
Well, the bigger question comes now is, as the economy's getting better, the cost of goods is just flying now. Interest rates are gonna start going up again, and that's all of a sudden when it comes to fruition. If you had the money to buy it, it might be a lot better off than doing a lease purchase or anything like that, because you're paying interest then. And as the rates go up, cost goes up.
Yeah, and you're, you're getting that vehicle now for today's price, not saving your money, paying the price five years, six years down the road, you, nobody's giving you money for any interest on your money in the bank. That, that has not moved, so...
We kinda hope it would eventually, but...
It's not moving.
Alright, anything else on that?
Okay, that's it.
Okay, so the next item in the business is a resignation acceptance. Regretfully, we have to accept the resignation of Russell Blanchett from the, uh, Litchfield Cable Television Network. He was an engineer there, and, um, I don't know, anybody got anything on that?
I, I, I think it is with regret, I mean, I've been working with Russell, with Russ for the last several years from Cable Committee, he's always been sort of the go-to guy from a technical perspective, and he helped create what's there today, and he's always been able to step up and do the right thing, and him departing is gonna be a huge loss to the committee. So, I don't think there's anything we can do to change his mind, but it is, it's gonna be a missed, missed resource in the group.
Okay, anyone else? We'll move on, administrator report.
Okay, just a couple things. Work continues on the Pilgrim Drive, um, Chase Brook culvert. Jack was out there last week, we had Bellmore, uh, trying to use the high-pressure hose to see if we could clear some debris out of the two culverts, um, they had some luck, uh, were able to get at least a good-sized hole punched through, which was able to drain the water, um, out of one side of the, uh, the road, but the water's still there, the Beaver active, um, so I think sometime this week, Jack is going to be trying to use, uh, a piece of equipment, build a contraption to try to see if we can just get like a twenty-foot, thirty-foot steel pipe into the culvert, and to see if we can try to ram through. It's not an easy, uh, job, I was out there just to take a look at it, and it's just, it's not something that departments deal with every day, and there's no contractors out there that specialize in this work, so it's, it's tough.
Jack had told me the Beaver, he built overnight. They'd cleared a portion of it, and the Beaver came back while they were gone. They, the next day, they, they showed up again, and the Beaver had rebuilt their stand.
Listen, if you, if your house roof came off, you put it back on.
I know, exactly, yeah.
You do something temporary, put tarp over or something, right?
Can't we just put dynamite?
You've had problems with Beavers down the before.
Oh, it's, yeah.
I know that we've tried all kinds of things to keep them out of there, it just doesn't work out.
Somebody told me they're protected, you can't shoot them.
Really?
You can...
Who's gonna report?
Fish, fish and wildlife, um, you, you can hire a trapper that's licensed to do off-season trapping.
Oh, get rid of them, they're just moving.
Just moving them someplace.
I know that you're not allowed to move them.
Unless you're authorized, right?
I didn't, exactly, I didn't think that you weren't allowed to kill them.
If you can't move them, you can't kill them.
Well, if you just kill them and leave them there, that's not moving them.
I really think they are...
No relocation program, but we can kill you.
Well, the reason for it is because you can't put your problem on somebody else by moving it.
Well, that's true, that would make sense, I guess, but then, I don't know.
I don't think it's a criminal act, but I am not sure, so I can't say.
Well, if you hear fireworks down there tonight, it might be me.
As I said, I don't know for sure.
Um, unfortunately, last week, we lost, um, another, um, condenser unit, um, outside here, so... Actually, I'm confusing that. The condenser unit that we lost two weeks ago, we finally got the bill, thirty-five hundred dollars. Another condenser, um, broke, we thought maybe because it was the last of the older style, we thought that was breaking, but the mice got in there and ate some wires, and and two wires touched and blew up some components, and, um, you know, the, the repair guy was able to put a new thing on it, and everything's good. So, the only reason I bring this up is, the, for right now, I'm just going to charge the thirty-five hundred dollars repairs to the general fund. We're gonna monitor the budget throughout the year, our, our goal is to charge it to the operating budget, I don't wanna reach into the building facilities, um, capital reserve fund, but we're, again, just gonna hold it there and see where the operating budget goes, so in December, you know, if we're looking for some money, I might have to ask the board to reach into the capital reserve fund. And I didn't put it down here as a bullet, but, um, next week, I am on vacation for one week, so...
Starting a week from yesterday?
Just, yeah.
Oh, today?
So just before the, uh, budget season starts.
Yeah.
Yeah, why not? Might as well relax a little bit.
And that's it.
Okay. Um, selectmen reports. Selectmen, good enough?
Uh, there's been no meetings on my side, uh, since June, so nothing reported on my side.
Planning board met.
Actually, can I interrupt one thing? Um, everyone's probably seen the news about the ransomware attacks in the pub, pub, public, right? So, just be aware of that, we as a town have also had it happen to us, in a very small scale, and nothing was lost, we were able to, you know, we have backups and recovered, and it's nothing, it's always been someone doing something. But it has forced me to invest in additional protection. Covered by my budget this year, obviously will show as an increase next year, but we have to do it, it's becoming, it's almost unstoppable sometimes, because it's so simple to do, and in some of these cases, a user, you know, goes to a website, clicks on a link, and next thing you know, everything they own has been encrypted, and they can't get it without paying four or five hundred dollars to get it back, and even then, you don't wanna risk the chances of giving them that kind of, you know, money. I've been personally involved in a lot of large companies that have been taken off the grid for weeks, and you probably saw in the news, and I spent a lot of time there over the last couple of weeks. So it happens, you know, even the best protection can be averted, but just, again, we, we have very basic stuff going on around here as far as protection, we've, we've ramped it up a little bit more, just to be a little more protected, predominantly because of the police department and the crews as being in the public always around, so, so it's, I just wanna make sure you guys are aware of that. I've been up a few nights trying to recover a few things, but we're good. We are good, it's no issue, it's just, just be aware of it.
Okay. Um, planning board met last week, and discussion, uh, they're working on the master plan, so a little bit more progression.
Rec, the basketball courts got paved, we painted them a couple Saturdays ago, and they're having the camps on them right now, so, yeah, the outdoor basketball courts.
Yep.
That's, that's going on at that end of the world.
Excellent. Uh, no items are removed from consent, and, uh, no other business, next regular scheduled meeting is August fourteenth. If nobody has anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, all those abstain. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in. Again, our next meeting is gonna be August fourteenth, where Chairman Lemire will be back and present, and, uh, do...